10:01, I will officially open the 99th meeting this week of the Select Board. Sarah? And first on our list is public comments. And Deana just said there's no one on Zoom, but we do have public with us in the room. Sarah, did you want to say anything?
I just had a question about, I think it's Mr. Khan's seat that expires in 2024. Is that correct?
I believe it's Ben Killam's, but I'm not positive.
I'll trade you though.
Could we get, the website says Mr. Khan in 2024.
What's your question about it?
Um, is that I thought elections happened in March, is that correct? So I didn't know what happens between the end of 2024 and March. Do the three of you still stay on and then kind of elections start?
I believe that Mr. Khan was reelected to a three-year term this year. This, this March.
In 24.
In 24.
So, so the website, I think this website needs to be updated, is, is the...
It could be, and the website is one of the things that we are very concerned with. It's, it's inability to stay current. It's not the website's fault. But, um...
We tried to get an automatic website, but it didn't.
Yes, Ben's seat is up in 25.
So this March coming up.
So this March, Ben will serve until March of 25. Then elections will happen, and then whoever...
Wins the election.
Wins the election in March comes to the board.
Okay, all right, thank you for confirming.
Yep, and, and just to make things even more complicated, the budget gets voted in March. But starting the first of the year, we do still have a budget that goes forward.
Yeah, I, I, I understand that. I just was really, I was confused about ending and the website thing ending in 2024 and kind of what happened between them.
It did, but he got revoked, much to his chagrin.
Okay, okay. So that you, that will be updated, that it's Ben Killam's seat that will be up for reelection?
Well, it says that in, it says that his seat ends in 25 anyways, on the website. Because that didn't change.
Okay, in March of 25.
Right, the only thing that just, we'll make sure Jordan updates it to David changing from 24 to 27.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Down there, right before town meeting, there'll be an opportunity to sign up if you're interested in being a select winner or not.
It's usually...
And then you gotta win the election.
It's usually, the sign up is usually the end of December or early January.
Very, very, yeah.
So keep your eye out for it.
Okay, thank you.
And the town clerk definitely posts all that onto the listserv and the webpage and all that.
Okay.
Yep.
My, I do have one, if I have another second, I have a question about meeting minutes and agendas. I noticed that the meeting agenda needs to be posted 24 hours in advance of the meeting, and I wondered if that was a decision that the Select Board made or how that decision came to be, that the agenda would be posted only 24 hours in advance of the meeting.
I'm not sure if that's a state statute or if it's, um, I know that this board attempts to post it earlier weeks, like we've had this week with lots of extra meetings. There just was not enough time to organize everything and get it out earlier. And it's been an issue, most towns have an issue with that unless there's a lot more staff, that a staff person works on updating the agenda much earlier. A lot of boards in slightly larger towns only meet once a month, which makes it easier also to have a bigger agenda earlier. But we do our very best to get it out. I, I don't think it's a state statute, but...
No, the state statute that, that refers to the 24 hours is the posting of a meeting has to be done 24 hours.
Okay, so there's no, currently there's like no, um...
The board has a procedure that we try to follow every time we have a meeting. Like this meeting on Thursdays, they're regular meetings. We try to make sure that the agenda is posted publicly by Tuesday.
Okay, I, I understand, I, I do understand that. But I guess what I'm really asking is how that determination was made, and it sounds like it's an agreement that the board has come to to try to meet that expectation.
It's a procedure that the board developed and asked us in the office to follow as best we can.
Okay.
And previous boards also have tried to follow that same procedure.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
You're welcome. Okay, and do we have other comments, Rich?
I, I believe that we're gonna talk about the revaluation, the, the letter that I've sent in for the revaluation. Is that true?
Well, we are going to make a statement about it, but we don't have anything else to give you at this moment.
I guess I'd like to hear your statement and then I'll ask follow-up questions if need be. Thank you.
You're welcome. Phil?
I'm, I'm gonna distribute to people the report of the, the school finance committee just for people's information from a couple of years ago.
Okay, we look forward to having that.
I already sent you an email copy, but I think I'll send a copy to the whole Select Board.
Okay. Thank you for that, we appreciate it. And by the way, just so that you know, I know this was a touchy subject maybe a year or so ago. I mean, no disrespect or extra respect. I sometimes call Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown, I sometimes call him Rich. Phil, I know as Phil personally, but I occasionally use last names. I'm not consistent with that, I try to be, but I apologize in advance.
Did you call me here Dr. Professor?
I could try and remember all of that.
I'll make it in the late for supper.
All right, so, um, we are moving on almost to the quarter after hour and we do have, we have Mark from the Dartmouth Ski Way. I apologize, I'm not gonna try your last name.
However you wanna say it, it's fine.
Would you say it for me?
A dog check.
A dog check, thank you.
You forgot it already.
I'll just...
Come on up and give us an update and let's see what we can do.
What's that drilling machine?
Uh, that, it's a drill rig, and we're putting posts in to put snow guns on top of.
That's what I guess.
Yeah.
That's about a piece of our apparatus.
Yeah, yeah, it's been pretty quickly, should be done today. It's been posts anywhere from like four to six feet from the ground.
Well, I saw the trailer there, so obviously you wanted to take it away.
Yeah, I mean, they came from Bretton Woods and they're constantly moving all over, especially this time of year with so many projects, and they do all, all sorts of different things, not just ski area stuff. Thanks for your time, I'll try to be brief. I, I did kinda have two topics I wanted to broach. I, I was a little disappointed to see Sean not here today, but I'll, I'll kinda speak to it anyway because I think there's...
Yes, please do.
I'd like to take an opportunity and sort of right-size some of the discussion around parking and activity at the ski way. I think there's, you know, some tracking and some data that's useful. And just a few other comments about the communications from the police to public, the police to me, and the Select Board to me, and make sure, and then of course talk moving forward about what the ski way can do in conjunction with the town to make sure we're all on the same page and doing, you know, making the best decisions for the community and the town and safety and all this in mind. The, the, the first comment I have is just surrounding parking and capacity at the ski way. In tracking the three years post-COVID that I've been there, right? The capacity at the ski way tends to be reached at about 1,000 skiers. We count skiers every day. The average skiers are about 365 skiers a day at the ski way when we're operating. Over the...
Excuse me, if I could ask you to talk up, some of us are old and deaf.
I'll do my best, I'll do my best. Those are the average days. What's important is capacity days, right? And from my observations in my four years there, 1,000 skiers is capacity. That's when we start to see these parking issues, right? Of the 263 operating days, and I will, I'll email this to you.
Oh, great.
So you, so you have it, uh, and Sean can look at it too. Of those 263 operating days, 14 days have been over 1,000 visits. That's us reaching capacity about 5% of the time. My feeling is that with some coordination with the town and the local police, that's a capacity issue that we can manage without increasing the capacity of, of the parking at the ski way. I don't think it's a reasonable burden for any business who's only reaching capacity 5% of the time to increase their parking, right? So I don't, my, my point is that I think the idea that there is chaos at the ski way is frankly inaccurate. I think a small amount of the time, there are parking issues. That is not my point, right? We see that in pictures, if you drive by, you see it. My contention is not that there is no issue. My contention is that the issue is small and that I think some of what the police and the town should do is a little bit of a cost benefit and figure out, is it worth dealing with this? And how do we deal with it together to make sure that this benefit exists for the community? Right, that's 110,000 people who've come skiing, and we're talking about a few days that there are any issues with parking, right? And, and those are the stats that I have. What I don't have opposite that is the information from Sean regarding how many tickets we've written. You know, I, I asked for those photos from the Select Board so I could see what days, how many days are we seeing these issues, right? So I can make sure that what I see matches what the other side sees.
And did you get, did you get the photos?
I did.
Can we make a note to make sure we forward those photos to him?
And the idea is so that we're all approaching this from the, from the same level. Because I think what's happened is when Sean speaks to me in my office, it is a different tone and rhetoric than what I see on emails, both to public and to me. And that's, that's confusing, right? That, that doesn't make it easy to be actionable when it's an individual action problem when we speak face to face, and it's a systemic lack of reaction from the ski way when it's communicated to the Select Board, the public, or occasionally to me via email.
Okay, thank you.
You know, the other thing in the communication, you can call the ski way anytime we're operating. We do have phones, okay, just to, just to level set some of the communications that have been out there. You can call the ski way, you can get to Patrol Dispatch and reach anybody at the ski way anytime we're operating.
And can we make sure we have that number so we can publicize it?
Sure, it's, it's in this, it's in this sheet, so you'll have it.
Yep.
The idea behind that is that if you call Patrol Dispatch, they can reach any member of the ski way on radio. It's a much more effective way to communicate than to call and leave a message, right? Also on this sheet is my personal cell and my office number. Just to talk a little bit about the crossing, which is another aspect of, of kind of the guardrail and the, and the activity at the ski way. Uh, I spoke for, at length to a resident from Canaan Ledge last season at the ski way who is concerned about people crossing the street. There are sort of two issues there for me. One is I think it's every citizen's right to cross the street when they feel like it, right, from, from, from my perspective. And then the other part is like the burden of the ski way, that we are serving people across the street for our, as a part of our business and to make sure that that crossing is safe. Just, I reached out to Sean to get approval to put crosswalk cones in the road. He gave me that approval, and we've done better to kind of delineate that crossing for vehicles and also delineate that crossing to encourage pedestrians to cross at that point in front of the stairs, in front of the lift. And I think we've done better with that, but the fact remains, this kinda goes back to the cost benefit. It's like, is it worth it for the town to deal with this, to have this amenity in there? I, I think it is, and I think generally speaking, the vast majority of people are pretty good citizens, right? Bearing in mind that over 100,000 people have visited the ski way in the last three years, and there's very few incidents. You know, that, the only other part of that is those who drive by every day, like Deana, like Ben, it does, it is busier, uh, not in terms of overall numbers, but we've changed the way that we're making snow and we're opening Holt's Ledge sooner than Winslow. Right, so you are seeing more operating days of people crossing this road. So I just wanna, you know, make sure that that's clear, and that's for, it's for a few reasons. Most notably, climate change. Holt's is north-facing, it gets less sun, the snow lasts longer there. It's, it's almost that simple.
And, and you said earlier, 263 operating days a year?
No, no, that's total the last three years. So in the 21, 22 season, and I'll have this broken down in the sheet, is 92 operating days. Season after that was 96 operating days. And then last season, given our warm winter, was 75 operating days.
Ouch.
Right, and, and in the sheet, you'll see the operating days, the total number of visits, how many days we reached that 1,000-plus capacity, and then how many races, which is another contributing factor to some of the parking issues. However, those, those days almost always coincide.
And you had said earlier that the racing days are like seven a year or something during...
Uh, we've actually never had more than five a year when I went back and looked at the calendar.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, also, it, it's not really worth very much, but in, in the document that I'll send you, I'll show you a layout of the, of the parking lot with the guardrail and the parking that will lose to the, the, the guardrail. I'm not really that interested in going back and forth about the guardrail, but the one thing I wanna point out was at the, the last meeting where there was a lot of comments. Sort of the takeaway from the Select Board and what Ben, Ben or Mr. Killam had said was, "We haven't even operated yet, let's see how it goes." My concern with that is that the solution to parking has been to reduce parking. So I think when I forecast ahead, rather than 5% of the days we're reaching capacity, I think we're gonna see more like 10 to 14%, because now that we've lost those 50 or so parking spots, that capacity is gonna be reached more at like 900 or 850 skiers. And obviously, we do that a little bit more often. So I think that's gonna be a tricky thing to judge because the solution has exacerbated the problem, and that's gonna make it more challenging for us to fix the problem.
Adam, I, I'm confused about your numbers. The, the 14 days that you say you reach capacity, is that an annual figure? Is that over the, over some protracted period?
Those are the operating, or the 14 days are over three years of operations. So I have it broken down per season, and it'll, it'll make more sense if you see that from a... So for instance, last year, four times we reached over 1,000 skier visits. Which was, last year was a, a down year, right? For instance, we, we did 10,000 less skier visits than the season before.
I'll look back here.
Yeah, so I just wanted to, to sort of level set that and just kind of provide a, a counterpoint to some of the more common narrative that's, that's been coming out of here. And then moving forward, I just wanted to speak to, we've already arranged shuttles, right?
Yes, that's excellent, thank you.
This is a shuttle every day for students coming from campus. This is two shuttles every day on Saturdays to try to reduce that. We've already scheduled during NC double As, we'll have, so Wednesday and a Friday for racing, we'll have double the capacity for student shuttles. And then DCAV, the athletic department, will also have a shuttle for public coming from Dewey Lot. When they respond to me, I will let you know exactly when that is scheduled. I don't know right now, I just know in our previous meetings, we, we've spoken to that. We have a calendar built, I can share it with Select Board, the police have it. In there right now are all the dates that we have racing. Right now, we have scheduled, including NCAA, six days of racing. These are not all Saturdays, but they will coincide likely with some of those capacity days. On top of that, we'll be sure to communicate to our pass holders about how to cross the street. We'll communicate to our pass holders about parking. And then we'll communicate to the greater ski way community, that is, anybody who's purchased anything at the ski way, we can email if, unless they've told us not to email them anymore, which is about 11,000 people. We'll talk about parking, we'll talk about comms and crossing, and we'll do this, try to be timely, which is in advance, in advance of those 1,000 days, which are January, February, and race days. Uh, there's an opportunity to try to work with Ford Sayer on race days to get, to get parking to be a little bit more reasonable. It's just a challenge because what, what ends up happening is you get two or three cars per racer, right? Mom comes, dad comes, grandma comes, and there it goes.
Yep.
Some of what we're exploring operationally at the ski way is to create part of our parking lot for carpooling. Frankly, this was an idea we had last year, but it's a little bit more challenging with the, the less capacity, but we're likely to isolate, uh, maybe our front row parking for carpooling to encourage carpooling and, and create less cars. Uh, we'll continue with crossing signage and try to make that more robust and make sure people understand where to cross. And if there's any other suggestions, uh, you know, from the Select Board or from Sean, we'll definitely take them into consideration, which, uh, you know, again, to kind of speak to some of the comments that have been made about our operations in the past, I think we have. I think we've given significant resources, time, and thought to the suggestions of the town and, and the police, and our goal is to have a great guest experience, and safety is a huge part of that. And then lastly, um, again, Sean's not here, but we've upgraded the wifi again at the ski way. Uh, most recently, the, it's a pretty significant upgrade where it's now 10 times faster than previous. So if connectivity is an issue for the police force, we'd encourage you to please use the free wifi at the ski way.
All right, thank you, Adam.
You, you have a park, a parking diagram that demonstrates the 50 missing spots?
Yeah, I can, I'll, it's in this document that I'll email you.
Yeah.
It doesn't make much sense here, but yeah, to show you where we've lost the parking. Because we turned off the road, and now we'll have a road inside of the guardrail to turn into parking.
Now, is there any more space down around the snowmaking garages and stuff down and the pond?
So what you see down at the pond is actually our, our Dart helicopter LZ. So we don't let anybody park there in the event that we have a medical emergency that the helicopter needs to come. So that's why you don't see parking down there.
This has really been helpful, I appreciate it. Do we have other David questions?
I don't wanna speak for Sean, but I think if I understand correctly, one of the concerns that he's expressed in the past has been related to enforcement. So is the ski way doing anything where, you know, somebody's parking in the road or somebody's blocking the road? Or do you guys have anybody out there sort of keeping track of, of people and, or, or, or flagging misbehavior?
In the road? No. Uh, in the, in the parking lot, we do our best to park as efficiently as possible, both as a business, the more cars we get in there, the better we do.
It's bigger than the devil.
Right?
Is that true?
It's more efficiently. We do that two ways. Uh, occasionally, we have employees to park. It doesn't happen very often because the priority is to run lifts and move people, but we've painted lines and we've created, you know, like a, a certain structure, and Ivan paints lines every Friday to try to increase capacity as much as possible. But in the road, we can't, right? Uh, I wouldn't ask an employee to go into the road to speak to public. And, uh, I don't think we have the right to tell people what to do on a public road. But in terms of like around the traffic circle and getting people to move through and things like that, we've tried to be efficient and communicate to Ford Sayer about drop-offs, it's challenging.
I'll, I'll stop trying to channel Sean since he's here.
He just walked in.
He's hard enough to Kimmo.
Oh.
I thought you were a Santa form, I'm like, what's going on?
Deana wants to know your name.
Yeah, please, please, sir.
Sean O'Keefe.
So we've had a, a really nice presentation.
Okay.
We'll have a printout of the presentation.
Yeah, I'll, I'll send that out over.
So I don't, I don't wanna summarize, but did, did you have a specific comment or follow-up on what you've said before? Or do you want a short summary from Adam or...
I, I mean, I, I just heard the, the last little part about, um, not having people or not having the authority to tell people where they can't, where not, where they can't park. No offense to Mark, but before he arrived, they did that. They had employees out by the parking lot telling people, "Don't park in the road, park inside." They had people directing traffic pretty much every Saturday and Sunday. Always worked well then. You know, the, the safety factor is the safety factor. You know, when the guardrails weren't there and you had that, the opening, openings, because there were many, uh, you know, cars just pull out in front of cars that are trying to go up and down the road. People do not adhere to signs. We can put up a thousand, I mean, yesterday, case in point, right at the trailhead around the corner, there were six cars parked in the road that people went hiking. All Dartmouth students, presumably they've been to the ski way before. Why they wouldn't go to a parking lot is beyond me. You know, towns and cities do not have to post no parking signs all over roads. It's common sense that a road is a road for a motoring public, not for parking. That's why there are parking lots, there are parking spaces. And, um, you know, that was just on a Wednesday morning that they decided to park there. Why?
Yeah.
You know, um, that, it's, that's one thing.
It's frustrating, that piece of it.
Right, I mean, and that's not the ski way's fault. And, you know, there are lots of people that use the trail that park in the road and park down the road and park up Dorchester Road. But on pretty much every Saturday or Sunday, it's the same old story.
So I wonder if, and, and this is not the, I don't think the time for a long discussion, but if the college is trying to be more organized, they're trying to do more busing, delineate better the parking spaces, if we can figure out if there's a way that we can do something proactive, especially on a weekend, um, whether it is some additional signs or whether it's a, a weekend of constant ticketing, which would be a pain in the neck, but perhaps it wouldn't, maybe not take too long if we did that, or towing.
The problem is the ticket doesn't solve the problem. Because just because you put a ticket on somebody's car, it doesn't mean, you know, they could ski for hours before they come back. So, I mean, the answer is towing, and, you know, I mean, we've done it in the past, it's a hassle. I've had people yelling and screaming at me while they're parked in front of a no parking sign when their car's getting ready to get towed. And then, you know, they want the town to reimburse them for their tow fee. Absolutely not.
Yeah, I think we need to talk about some of that though, because if, um, I know in Hanover at CVS, all the shoppers parking in the CVS shopping lot.
Parking at the end of the parking lot. If you walk the wrong way, he hooked up on you.
Yeah, he sat there, it didn't take but a couple of days, and that mostly cured the problem. But it is an issue, it's a safety issue. I, I was pleased to hear that the college was, personally, I thought the college didn't care. It sounds like the college does care, and there's been time spent talking about it, assessing what's been going on and trying to figure out. And if there's anything we can do from our end, even if it's a pain in the neck for a couple of days, it could make a big difference.
But, I'll clarify, clarify one thing. The college does care, but there's kind of two relationships that line has with the college and the ski way. One is this discussion, which of course, I'm a representative of the college by virtue of my job at the ski way. But also, I care, right? The ski way cares, the ski way is part of the community. Since I've been there, we try to participate as much as possible. We try to do a great many things to support, and we view ourselves as an amenity in the town and of the town. So I care about the safety and I care about being a good partner. And, and in some ways, that's why I care about the guardrail, because it's a, it's a solution that has made nobody happy, right? And, and I, I think that I own part of the guardrail because I haven't communicated well enough to, to Sean and, and to the town in terms of what's the issue and what's the size of the problem, right? So the other part of that is the taxation and the, and the agreement of the town, which that's more the college. But I think it's worth pointing out that I view myself as a part of the, the community. I view the ski way as a part of the, the community. So that, the idea that it's us versus the town is, is just not the case, and I think that's worth pointing out.
Thank you. Okay.
My only comment is the discussions have gotten a lot more communicative. And excuse me not flirting out that word, but...
I understand.
Since the guardrails went in, so people are now talking about the problem. Since the guardrails went in, so people are now talking about the problems and the issues, and my guess is, over a period of time, will come up with solutions that make everybody happy, so.
Or more people happy.
More people happy. You never make everybody happy. But.
And we are going to continue with the college, the administration part of the college, with those other issues and discussions.
Certainly, you know, as the season approaches, like, you know, the data from the town around ticketing, or any, you know, reported incidents having to do with these issues, to correlate them with some of what I see as capacity issues, I think would be helpful. Because right now, it's very anecdotal, and I'm trying to provide some actual data so we can have solutions that are based on, you know, when we see the issues, and to correlate that, I think would be very helpful.
Yeah, I, again, I don't want to speak for Sean, but what I think I've understood him to say is that there's been, that there's an impediment to writing tickets, and that he avoids doing that, because he can't get the, he doesn't have the connectivity up there to be able to run plates and do the stuff you need to do when you issue a citation.
Right.
Do I have that about right?
Yes, so, you know, our, to write parking tickets in areas where we don't have service is extremely difficult, especially if you don't have the driver present. So then, all that information that I need needs to be relayed over the radio airways, and it takes up time. Dispatch is not real great about that kind of stuff. And especially if they're busy, it's just not going to happen.
So, Mark was telling us that they've upgraded their wifi capacity at the skiway, is that doing it?
No, it has to be super, super high.
Last week, we upgraded, again, last week.
Yeah, well, I, you know, without a repeater tower somewhere out there, I'm not going to get connectivity. I mean, and I can go out there and mess around and see if it works, but, you know.
Could you give it a try?
My sense is that it won't.
So I think, just to be clear, my point in providing this data is not to tell anybody how to police. I do not know how to police. I am, right, I'm not, that's not my recommendation, but I think similarly, a little bit of that respect should be given back to the operation, right? Which is to be allowed to operate in the way that we see fit, with the business levels that we see, and we're trying to provide data to let everybody understand why we're operating this way. And I think, I think some of that working together is missing in some of this discussion.
It's a valid point. Thank you. We appreciate that.
All right.
Ben, David, more from you folks, if there's anyone in the audience, Phil.
Sean, is the same impediment to issuing the warning? I mean, do you have to do all the radio business and license plates and et cetera, issue people a warning?
A warning, I don't need to have all of that information. But, you know, warnings are a waste of time in those situations.
I'm sure I didn't do that.
I said warnings are a waste of time in that situation, because there again, the car sits there, you know, I mean, like I already said, we shouldn't have to tell people they can't park in the road. It's the most common sense rule of getting a driver's license, you know? People don't pay attention to any signs. It happens every day, people speed, people blow through stop signs, it's, they become complacent. And, you know, I mean, people in our own town drive by our little flashy speed signs, going way too fast, and they're like, "Oh, well, I didn't see it." You live here, you have to see it, and you have to know it's there, that, you know, I mean, and when you're dealing with other outside people who are going to the skiway or coming to any other amenity or going north of the town of Lime, you know, it's, yeah. I mean, if we, if we are going to, I mean, if we're going to put, and I know that we're going to put more no parking signs up out there on the right-hand side of the road, but you can't, in situations like that, and we saw pictures before, where when the roads close down to one lane, I mean, we just can't, we can't operate like that.
Mark?
So I wanted to, since our early meeting, I chatted with one or two people around, but I wanted to provide some background context to one or two pieces that people might not have otherwise read, talk about. Some of the things to, just because one of the challenges with this is very few people have been dealing with this issue for a long period of time. Ben has a fairly long history, Judy, you have memory, Sean does also. One of the challenges, one of my other roles, switching hats, is I've also been on the skiway advisory committee, so I can speak a little bit on that realm.
Can you keep it short, though, because we do have other due items?
Yeah, so specifically, the things to note was that, yes, Sean should have felt a significant change when Mark came in, because the previous leadership for the skiway had a different charge, and they respond in a different way to your requests. Specifically, I would say that they probably did not, were not able to manage parking as much as you think they were in the main parking lot, they did some, but they were much more attuned to making sure that the turnaround space in front of the skiway and traffic did not build up on the road along those lines. They actually were then called to task by Dartmouth for not effectively providing customer service, because they cared more about that piece and not making mistakes than trying to make the skiway a pleasant experience for a broader range of people. So one of Mark's changes was that. Additionally, the piece that I have noted once or twice, as I would, Sean, is be encouraged to write some tickets, I would also please impeach you to write some tickets. It makes a huge difference to Mark's ability to put teeth behind this. Even if you don't tow, even if it means that it's not going to solve the problem on a day that it's down to one lane, hopefully will help create a solution for the future, because people understand that you care, and that you're there, and all that. They hear so many messages from him, it's not as useful as if it also comes from the police. The last thing to note was the tone that I got from things on this was that a feeling that this was Dartmouth's problem which was being pushed upon Lime. The main difference that I think is just important to keep in mind, and this is what I heard, an incredible drumbeat of people coming up to me over these few weeks doing it, is that, you know, over a third of the people who live in Lime have skiway passes. Approximately half the people who live in Lime ski at the skiway or interact with the skiway, they don't necessarily view this as Dartmouth's thing here, they view this as their personal resource also, and so they value that. They're not the ones who come to talk to you on the whole, the people who we hear from are the ones on Canadian Edge who are rightly scared or unhappy with the traffic going in front of them and people walking, and that's a genuine concern, and that's something that Mark's trying to deal with and Sean's trying to deal with, and still more has to be done, probably to make that work. But know that this is a value that people hold. The other thing, last thing I'll say, is I know Sean believes that people should know not to park in roads, but again, the issue that he mentioned the other day with the AT reminds us that it's a constant battle of education. So the more that we can all work together, give them the messages, the better our chances are going to be. Thanks.
Thank you. You're hired, you're the mediator.
Can the skiway, through the loudspeakers and everything else, contact, if Sean has a car and he calls you, can you contact a skier and ask him to come down and move their car? Want to speak to Sean so he has direct contact with the?
It sounds like connectivity is a concern, but if Sean were to give me the name of the owner of the car, what I can do is shut that person's access off on their pass, and the next time they try to go up the lift, they won't be able to.
That would do it.
And then we can let them know, like, we can let the lift operations team know, when this person gets hung up, they need to go see the GM, or quite frankly, we can just write in there, we can have a flash on the screen, move your car.
Well, that would be another layer.
But again, I don't know if that's self-suppressed, if connectivity is an issue, it might be a moot point.
Well, as he says, if you could talk to a person, it makes it a lot easier than.
Right, to get that person's information off of the license plate is a connectivity issue, so it would be challenging to get that information. But that said, if we got it, we could potentially communicate.
And that's something you need to.
Not if it's a borrowed car, if it's mom's car, if it's dad's car, if it's a student and it's a rental, a zip car, that's more challenging, but if it's in your name and you're skiing, I can shut your pass off, and you can't get up the lift anymore. I can also see where you are and potentially go out and find you if I know who you are. I can see where side of the mountain you've gone up. Right?
Big brother.
Yes. Big brother and a little skier.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mark.
Appreciate, and we look forward to that, a printout?
Thanks. Yeah, I'll let you know that as soon as I get back to my office.
Great.
I'll include you on it.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. I think, and thank you to Sarah and Mark for coming in, keeping us on the straight and narrow, or attempting to. One, two, three, four. Next, we have minutes to review and approve from October tenth.
No, we're all second as amended, right?
Yes, and a reminder that there are the public disclosure of the non-public minutes that also were sent out late in the day yesterday, which are not on the sheets that are in front of you. So if you want to hold off, you can. It's our usual, we met for legal, this decision was made, we met for reputation, this decision was made, or no decision was made. I didn't print a copy of it, so I don't have it. Did you see it?
Yes, I did. I did see it. It has password yours is, it just says that you went into the C reputation, one, two, three different times to do evaluations, that's all it says, and talks about the Lockline Lodge pending lawsuit.
Yep.
And then you went into public, and then you, let's see, public session to report upcoming Zoom, oh, about, I talked about Avatar, and then you adjourned. Is that it?
Okay. So all those in favor of the minutes?
Ben, I.
I.
Judy, I, okay. And that will lead me to, written the minutes, that leads me to the Lockline Lodge assessment lawsuit has been settled. We're very pleased to say, the Lodge had an expert who came up with a number, the town had an expert who came up with a number, which was less than the town had the property assessed at, and we made the offer on the town's assessor expert's number, and the Lodge agreed with it, and that lawsuit is settled out of court, which is terrific. And let's see, Avatar. So that was the very last thing that came up when we came out of non-public sessions. Dina updated us on a situation with our assessing software, and do you want to give a very brief update for those in the public about Avatar?
Well, not a movie.
Avatar, yes, there is a movie, yes, and it's a fun one, it's a great one.
We wondered what a robot was doing on the agenda.
Yeah, I was going to have Jordan come too, because she was, it was the tax collector, and Jordan and myself that sat through the presentation by three people at Avatar, it was a Zoom, it was a wonderful, excuse me, it was a wonderful, I was just getting started, a wonderful hour and twenty minutes that we all spent hearing about their software and the potentials of us switching to them and the abilities that they have, that especially Marcy and Jordan were quite excited about.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
A lot about the double entry that we have to do between Vision and BMSI, Vision being the assessing software, BMSI being what we use for tax. I have to do a lot of double entry and then print out all these reports, make sure it's all communicating correctly. Avatar would eliminate a lot of that issue, so that would be a lot of time-consuming.
Yeah, it's two different softwares, there's the tax software, and then there's an assessing software, but they work together, which is what totally excites all of us. And the tax part, Marcy said work, so she couldn't be here, but the tax part of it is above and beyond by leaps and bounds of what we have with BMSI. Not to dish BMSI, but their company's been bought out by G-Works, and they're not improving or updating or working on the tax, so we need to find a new tax program and/or just wait for G-Works to develop a new one. Part of the problem with that is, we all know, new software programs aren't necessarily so fun at first. And Avatar is a well-known company, they've been around for years and years and years and years. They've actually just worked very hard to get their software to address one of the biggest complaints that every single town in the state of New Hampshire has, which is how you print out your MS1 numbers. It actually prints them out, so that they come out looking exactly like the state required MS1 form. But it's costly. The switch would be costly, the switch would be time-consuming, we're kind of in a, in a unique situation now, because we're having our revale, it would be really much, much better, work better, to switch the software at the same time as the revale. I don't know that we can do that. It's not the end of the world, it doesn't mean we can't do it after, after the update is done, we'll just have to probably address. They like you to do it at the same time, because the rounding and some of the other things in the program makes people's, people in the past have gotten concerned about changes in their assessments, and it's from switching software. So, you know, we can, like I said, we can talk about that at a further time, but I think the important message from us, and Marcy, who's not here, is that, you know, we would really, really, really like to consider switching software to Avatar. We've talked to, especially Marcy, has worked with many different tax collectors and talked with them about Avatar and the pros and cons. We've talked to some assessing people who use it, actually, our assessors certainly rave about how much easier and better Avatar is to use.
Right. So in the past, several years ago, we kind of considered switching to Avatar, and at that time, nobody thought it was a good idea. So that has changed.
Well, Avatar has changed. Avatar, and I think in the past six years, probably, from what I've heard from people I've talked to, has upgraded and changed a lot of their, what do they call them, tools, I guess is what they have in their software, to better the programs. It's like they're listening to the assessors, and they're listening to the tax people, and they're adjusting things so that it's making, making.
A lot more user-friendly.
Right.
And clear.
Right.
Okay. So you're going to continue to investigate, get some numbers, get some?
We have some numbers. You know, it looks like a change at the minimum, a switch for the tax program and the assessing program is going to be about twenty-seven thousand dollars.
Is that a one-time cost, or is that an annual?
That is a one-time cost, the annual, there is an, will be an annual cost, but it depends on how many of the different sections that we end up going with, because they have all kinds of different tools that you can add on, as far as a website where people can go and actually look at their tax bill and get a print of their tax bill. You know, there's various things, the internet kiosk, which lets you go and look at different parcels and. Um, you know, there's, there's various things, um, the internet kiosk, which lets you go and look at different parcels and, you know, it's, it's like the website we have through Vision, too.
So.
Payment, you can do payment, you can, go ahead, yeah.
Can we get sort of a breakdown of what you think you might want and what its cost is and how long it would take, and if we can combine that with the update? I don't know that you can do that in the next two weeks, but if we could have it to build into the budget, if that is what we decide we want to do.
Right, I'm, I'm pretty sure that we can, I think that Marcy and Jordan and myself need to sit down and, and really look at which, which of the different options there are that's gonna work the best, you know, and, and and the only other option they do have is that we could just switch the tax program right now and not the Vision. So we could still, you know, so, so there's a lot, so we'll sit down, we'll look at everything, um, put everything kind of in a, in a, uh, what makes sense to present to you guys and what we might prefer, and then you guys can look at it and we can go from there.
Okay, that sounds great.
With respect to the, uh, ongoing costs, also it'd be helpful to have, presumably Vision provides analogous services and charges as a fee, so you, I mean, the one-time cost, that we wouldn't incur, but the ongoing costs, if there's gonna be a change, that's useful information.
Again, that depends on which, how many of the different things we choose.
Right.
There will be a yearly software for, for that, but we'll have those places.
Yeah, but if the yearly software costs are gonna double or triple, then we need to know that.
Yep, 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 we can have all that for you.
And presumably you guys will give us some options or tell us what you, what your preferences with respect to ongoing services and then.
Whether, without the little blue robot.
Right.
Blue robot, okay.
Yeah, sounds great, thank you.
One thing that worries me a little bit, or that I, I just wanna ask about is, um, so we were engaging Vision to do this townwide reassessment. It wasn't like we had a horde of different assessors jump, chomping at the bit to come and do that work for us. Is anything that we're doing here, or, or anything that we're, is making this change gonna jeopardize that, uh, that contract or that providing the services?
I haven't had a conversation with Vision yet, I have a call-in to the guy to explain sort of where we're at. And, and as long as, I, the change for, the change for the software could not, it, it should happen before the revale, or that would make things easier, doesn't have to. Vision is not gonna come and do our revale and enter our information into Avatar's software. You know, they're just not going to.
But you had commented, I think perhaps as an aside, that Avatar also does revales. And they might have capacity to do our revale.
And I'm waiting to hear.
We haven't signed the contract with Vision yet.
You have not.
So I wonder if we could, uh, re, we could consider re, um.
Revoting.
Well, no, not, yeah, revoting, but also, also reposting a request for a, for the, uh, uh, revale in light of the fact that we're considering changing software, and that maybe is germane to the the question of who would wanna bid on it and whether, and what, and what the cost would be.
To be fair to Vision, I wanna have a conversation with the guy that came in, because he was, not just because he's really nice, but just to be fair, we've been with Vision a long time, I don't want to do anything, you know, detrimental to them or, or to, to their software. So I wanna have that, I want us to have that conversation first, and then we can come back to you guys and go from there.
Okay.
If you're okay with that, in two weeks.
Two weeks, sounds good. Rich wanted to speak.
Yeah, Phil, you go first.
I've written medical billing software, I've bought medical billing software, my wife has implemented systems for colleges. I would advise to never not buy both parts of what you're gonna need, 'cause there's a whole programming step on top that happens where you design what your system is gonna look like and what pulls what from where and whom, and it's way better and much cheaper to get that done at the beginning, rather than to have people come back, and then it's another thirty grand to do the overlap properly.
And, and appreciate that experience, and that's part of the problem that we've had with these two programs we have now, they don't play well together.
Yeah, you, you gotta get them to play right with each other.
Well, just so you know, yes, there's plenty of people who still use, uh, Vision and, and have Avatar for their tax program and Vision for their assessing, they do work well together. They are, they're designed so you can do that, but yet using them together is way more beneficial, and it's, I think it's twelve thousand nine hundred dollars for the tax part software, so it's not, you know,
In about nineteen ninety-five, we paid twenty-seven thousand dollars for a medical billing program for a practice of fourteen, um, that I'm sure is double that today, so these are not outlandish prices.
No, Rich.
So, um, I had, uh, a lot, a lot of questions about this, the, I think it's important that whatever the, the select board does is that the revaluation be completed in time for the twenty-twenty-five, uh, tax year. I mean, that's, that's your commitment you've made to the residents.
We don't need reminding of that, but I appreciate that, it's on your mind.
I'm just stating that.
We're trying not to push it off.
Having, uh, well, I was a software guy, professional software guy, changing this stuff's hard.
Yep.
Um, and, you know, I'm sure Avatar has pulled in records from Vision, uh, and so I'm concerned from a timeliness standpoint, can Avatar mobilize a team to come and do this, uh, I think. So, I'm concerned about the timeliness.
Yep.
My inclination might be to say, let's do the revaluation, get it into Vision, and then throw the switch in the next year, so that's, that's, that's my inclination.
That's exactly what we said.
Well, that was our concern as well, and, and we're just not, we're not sure which way to go.
Yep, okay.
If we had a few extra months, if we're gonna make the switch, we could do the whole thing.
Right.
Because again, my concern has always been, we have people who really don't trust the present system, and it'd be great to have a whole system, but we may not be able to do that, so that's a conversation this board will have to have.
And then I have, um, I have another question, uh, the, the, the group of us rely very heavily on the data that's in the Vision software, we actually can look at the various pages of the Vision software and see various things, that's how we do the analysis and all. It would be very useful, very important for us, to make sure that whatever follow-on system the town adopts give us the same, that we have access to the same kinds of data. And so, is, so I guess my question to you is whether there's a, um, an opportunity for us, what am I asking, to provide information to the Avatar folks, provide questions to the Avatar folks to say, so this is, this is the data that we retrieve, is there a way to get equivalent data from Avatar?
I can't answer that.
I mean, of course not.
I can tell you for myself, I think that's a step beyond, we don't usually get that kind of public input in a decision that the board needs to make, but we certainly want, whatever we have, we want it to be useful to the public.
Sure, yep.
I guess, I guess that's all I can say, at this point, we are just at the very beginning of this, and I'm really not sure where it's gonna go.
Okay.
My hope would be to do one thing, one time, and move on, but I, if it takes longer than we thought, we may have to take longer than we thought, because we don't wanna every year mess around with everybody being upset, nobody understanding, except for maybe four of you, how things work, and just having this constant, um, suspicion and upset does not help this town at all in any way, so there's a lot on the table here that needs to get looked at and move forward on.
Okay.
We're not trying to cut you out of the system, we just need to get the information before we figure out some of the ancillary issues.
Thank you.
Okay, two weeks, we hope.
Sure.
Or whatever, if you can, you can. We, we're building a budget, there's a lot of stuff that goes on this time of year.
I'm sure we can come back to you in two weeks with a proposal.
That would be very awesome, thank you. I'm gonna go sort of backwards, uh, on our list here, the Edgehill Bridge funding, Dina gave me an update, she was pretty tickled with this. Thank you, Jordan. We had, as you know, it's a six-hundred-and-ninety-thousand project, you all know, I'm sure that the covered bridge will be closing next week on like the twenty-third. Then we have money coming from capital reserves, we got a bridge grant which amounted to eighty-eight thousand five hundred and eighty-nine dollars. We had small donations adding up to sixty-one thousand four hundred and eleven dollars and a hundred thousand dollar donation, which means that instead of needing a hundred and ninety thousand dollars from taxes, it looks like we're only gonna need fifty-six thousand, only four hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Judy, would you say that last number again?
Fifty-six, four, five, six, versus the estimated one-ninety that we went to town meeting with. That's really great, and Dina, thank you very much for the printout and the update and.
You're welcome.
The identity of the hundred thousand dollar contributor public?
No. And, and, and I think, yeah, the hundred thousand dollars was the, was one donation that was before, um, all the,
Fundraising.
At, at the ve- very beginning of the fundraising, so the total amount fundraised was two-hundred-and-ninety-four thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. That includes that hundred thousand, though, so.
That's including the grant.
Nope, just including the hundred thousand in the donation.
Ah, okay.
Yeah, so, so yeah, but I think the exciting part is that the part that has to come from taxes is much smaller.
Do we have a spreadsheet that lays this out, that could be public, right?
Sure.
Thank you, yes.
I gave it to the Valley News, it can be public. Only 'cause she was having on her time.
Yeah.
Grasping the numbers.
That'd be great.
Do we know, uh, do we have a budgeted reopening or a, a projected reopening date for the bridge, do they have a sense about how?
You're talking about Edgehill, or?
Edgehill.
He, he told me to tell everybody to plan on four months, he's hoping it won't take that long, obviously has to do with weather, but plan on four months.
Okay, so, in spring sometime.
Yep.
And while you're on that subject, then, the big bridge, I think it's been in the newspaper and around, but they are looking now at mid-November
Right.
For opening the, uh, East Stepford Line Bridge over the Connecticut.
Yes.
Eleven fifteen, okay, Edgehill, Edgehill, and another really nifty thing, we hope, fingers and toes crossed, this week, yesterday, we believe we have, uh, an agreement on the Goose Pond Road property for the homeowners to retain and/or organize or remove certain identified items and a cleanup to begin on Monday, we hope, with a hired company.
Yeah, I'm just waiting to hear, he's, uh,
He may be.
He's looking to see if he can get his two helpers again, so he'll get back to me today. It may be the twenty-first or it may be the twenty-second, depending on whether.
But it's coming along, it's scheduled.
Yes.
And, um, we're clean, work on cleaning up the Dorchester Road property, uh, the select board is ongoing.
Yes, thank you.
So the select board is performing that work now, or people at your behest?
Um, people at our behest is cleaning up Goose Pond Road, we hired a company. We are working on the technical aspects of getting into the Dorchester Road property and cleaning it up.
Okay. It's a much bigger project and more complicated, and we, uh, we.
I know, he's having a good time out there.
There's this big old nasty, it's a loss. Um, there, uh, we undertook a site visit. It just gets complicated figuring out what you can clear and what you can't clear, and so we're trying to get guidance with that.
We're, we're, we're on those.
Just so people know, we spent, we had two non-public meetings this week about, about these issues, and it's an ongoing effort by the, on the part of the select board, that piece of the cleanup may not happen this fall, but we're hopeful that it, that it can, and if not, we're hopeful that it'll happen in the spring. Good, and, and that's terrific information, for me to know you're paying attention, and you're working the problem. That's helpful. Tricky too, because you don't wanna be too public with this stuff, it's, it, there's reputational issues, and there's a lot of emotional sensitivity on, on various parties' parts, and not to mention the, the press. Sure, I mean. It's, I think appropriate to let people know that we're, we're working that issue.
It sounds like relatively cooperatively with the landowners, not confrontationally is the impression I'm getting, but.
I would say it's mixed.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good way to put it.
They, they retained a lawyer, and that helped the negotiations.
Helped and slowed us down, too.
Yeah, well, it's.
It's a mix, yeah.
And we, we fully expect this not to go smoothly along. Part of the town meeting vote was in anticipation of the legal issues that were involved. And I just, my comment is, for all those who, who wish you were a select person, there's a number of things that I can list, starting with floaty gate, uh, that are not pleasant being a select.
Okay.
If we're just budgets, it would be a pretty easy job.
Yeah, you just made Judy do it.
That's so sweet of you. We also have an update, uh, here, I'm gonna say Mr. Brown, but it's Rich Brown who comes every meeting and has asked for us to, as a board, agree to not enforce a section of the zoning ordinance until his petition has had a chance to go to town meeting. We do not have an answer for you on the question of whether or not we actually have that authority.
Yes, we do, we got it.
I sent it, I sent it to you. Sorry.
Guys.
She's overloaded.
You want me to do this?
We are all overloaded, go ahead.
Go for it.
So we, we, we got a, advice of council that we could, uh, I would say not, I, I wouldn't say that we are not gonna enforce it, I would say that we're going to delay enforcement.
Right.
And, uh, our town council has indicated that we, that the select board does have that authority, so we haven't had it, we haven't had a chance to discuss it, but my view would be that, in light of that, we delay enforcement until one of two things happens. Uh, one being that Mr. Brown, uh, fails to get the necessary number of signatures in order for the, his, uh, his proposed petition to qualify. If that were to happen, then I think we would wanna move forward with enforcement, and, or two, if, uh, I think we'd wanna move forward with enforcement, if he does get the number of signatures he needs, it makes the town meeting, makes it, makes it as a petition warrant article at town meeting, and the warrant article fails to pass.
And then, so that's a motion.
I second that.
Then second set, a motion, and then we had looked for a, a letter.
We got that, too.
And we got the letter.
Yes.
Okay, well, my head is obviously set elsewhere, let's see, this is my sixth meeting with this group this week.
It's all, it's all merging together.
Mushed in my head. Okay, so we do have your letter, thank you very much for that. Do we have other public comments on this? Okay. All those in favor of this motion say aye.
Even aye.
Judy, aye. The motion is voted unanimously. We will notify David Robbins, our planning administrator, that we are, whatever that thing said is, we're delaying enforcement or pausing enforcement until one of two things occurs.
That's fair, thank you.
Very welcome.
I would also just comment just generally, you know, you're, as an individual, you're active in town politics, you're on several boards.
Yes.
Not a good look to be doing stuff and not applying for the necessary.
Yes, it never occurred to me, although I realize I would probably have been back asking for change to the ordinance. And, and so, yes, thank you, I, I take that advice to heart.
Yes, as I used to say in Hanover, pretty much anything you wanna do requires some kind of a permit. Or permission at the very least. Okay, that was that, and then, I don't believe we have a manifest.
You do not.
Or did you send that out this morning too? You had a question at the beginning of the meeting about, was it this issue or was it the request for information to go to the assessors that are doing the reassessment?
The revaluation, yes, I did send that letter to you. The questions that I asked are, are ones that I would hope you ask of whoever does the revaluation to say, these are questions that interested citizens in life will want to know the answers to. Can you put this in the report?
So, we will, we have those, we will put those on hold until we have a contract. I don't mind forwarding that, I'm not gonna make that a condition of their contract. But this is the, the, the questions that Rich had sent us by email.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay. But let me just.
When you're done, I'll let you.
Really trying to process, so, there's that. But also, what concerned me was if there are folks in town that are aware of missed properties that aren't being assessed or incorrectly assessed properties, rather than, you're welcome to complain about that, but rather than just complaining, it would be really nice if you could, whoever has that information could let us know about it. Jordan or Dina or.
It's the missing lots that concern me that you're saying.
That we, we would love to have that information and be able to have that looked at, put into the base.
Totally.
So, that was.
So, the reason, yes, we can do that, the reason I didn't put it in that note is that I didn't want it to get really long because these are kind of broad questions. Thank you, so to whom should I address this? To?
Send the list to Jordan that you have of missing lots.
That would be terrific.
So, we can look at that.
David, you have the floor.
Yeah, and I haven't obviously spoken to Ben or Judy about any of this, but I just wanted to express my view, and that is, there, there's a couple people, you being one of them, and, and there's some others in town who have loudly and repeatedly expressed the view that there is a substantial inequity in terms of town valuation of property. If I understand the complaint correctly, it's that you believe that high-value properties are undervalued relative to low-value properties in town and that that, and if that were true, it's obviously a, a terrible inequity, that shouldn't be the case. So, you guys have expressed that view loudly a number of times, including in connection with your warrant article that, that was presented a couple of years back. And the select board has looked at that issue repeatedly. I'm not a, a, a property valuation expert or a statistician, but we've asked people who are those things to look at those things, look at that, look at your complaint and look at the evidence that's been presented in support of that belief. And every time we have done that, the people who have looked at it have come back to us and said, we don't find any support for this assertion. This, there is, you know, and including the, the State Department of Revenue has looked at it and done statistical analysis and their, their view is, no, we don't see any support for, for the, for the, for this.
Premise.
Yeah, this premise, this proposed, the, the, this theory that this inequity exists in the town of Lonon. So, when you come to us with a letter that says, we want you to go to the new appraiser that you're hiring and say, hey, this is a problem here and we want you to address how you're gonna address this, my reaction to that is absolutely not, I have no interest in doing that. I think when we hire a new appraiser, we ought to ask them to do their work objectively and conscientiously and fairly, but we ought not to be trying to put our thumb on the scale to get them to achieve a particular result or to move in one direction or another. Particularly not in, in, in a direct, in, in, we ought not to be asking them to, to correct a problem that we've been told by experts doesn't, that, that there's no evidence that it exists. So, at least that's my view on that. I, I, I don't guess I have any particular objection to passing along your letter, but, but, but I think you have to recognize you, you're presenting a theory of the world that we've been, we've looked at over and over again and been told, well, there doesn't seem to be support for this theory. So, that's my, my two cents.
My only comment on that is that, that the range of prices in housing exists in every single town, probably in New Hampshire, and it's probably been handled in every single town similar to the way it's been handled at Lonon. So, I don't think we're an outlier, and if you have information on the other towns handling things differently, we would like to hear about that.
Thank you, I, I thank you both, and the questions will be asked. And I, I hope that when we review the data that comes out of the revaluation, we say, this looks better, this looks fair, this looks the way we hope want. I mean, that's my sincere hope.
That's our, our hope.
And, right, and, and we have maybe slightly different metrics from other things, but we hope it comes out fair.
And so, yes, we all hope to be on that page, and as I've started saying to people, probably only the last ten years, the system is very difficult. The only way I see to fix it is to go to Concord, who makes up the rules, and institute, boiling it down in my simple head, which right now is totally mush, would be, okay, you've got a five hundred thousand dollar property, it sells for six fifty, you get a year of lower taxes in a year from now, that supposedly, what is it called? The alarm, long arm reach.
Right.
That sounds much better. That property then gets assessed going forward at that tax.
Many states do that.
California does that, whatever you pay it by.
So, if you, if anyone could get the state to change to that system, I think it does two things, it damps down the excessive price paying and it also makes it, if that's what you think is fair for that property, then we think so too.
Oh, if you go on Zillow and look at the prices of houses that sold and what they predict they'll sell for, every house in town is an exorbitantly priced house.
I, I don't, I, I'm not gonna argue, let, we'll let Phil talk.
You know, there are problems with the, with the system as well. Reside in California, I know what it tends to do is it tends to, people tend to hold on to their property forever and they don't wanna sell it because they know when they sell it, the market value's gonna be adjusted way up and the tax rate will go way up, and so, it has an effect on, on the market. People don't sell houses, they hand them down to their kids.
Yeah, yeah, there's always a downside.
At least it's still, I mean, things are just still selling, selling, selling.
Yeah, I don't think I'm aligned with any point of view on this problem. I, I will say that some of the arguments are statistical. They have to do with what are you picking, how are you picking it, to whom are you applying the Kama model? If you, if you did another, David, we talked about sampling, if you did a different sampling, what kind of results would you get? And, and to some extent, you're really hampered by, by the Kama model, which may not give you enough flexibility in valuing high-value properties. But that's the model that the state has imposed with its particular statistical assumptions.
We provide something and then the state comes on.
But, but the, the argument is a, is a realistic argument over how do you do the numbers? And nobody's trying to get away with it.
Yeah, and the select board can't do that, we're not statisticians and we would, we would never. So, we have to rely on experts that we, that we engage or, or that work at the Department of Revenue.
So, yeah, I appreciate that, and statistics was the only class that I did not get an A in when I graduated from college.
I was so scared, I re-taught myself algebra, aced the course, and wound up teaching it to get through graduate school.
Oh, my gosh.
What I learned at graduate school was that everybody went to the statistician to get the statistics done, including the professors.
That's funny. Listen, thank you for this open conversation, and it's a challenge for all of us. We want to be fair.
And, and you know, I will say, it's, it's a really hard job for the assessor too. I mean, I'm not saying it's an easy job, I just, that's all I'll say.
How to make some viewpoints, that's perfect. I believe, I have checked off everything on the agenda. I don't think there were any hidden items that came up in the last.
No, you just have signatures, so don't be leaving.
But Bailey is at eleven twenty-four moving to quit.
I'll second.
Thank you, David, all those in favor say aye. And Judy, aye.
I could get to the post office before they're one.